Call.
County Commissioner Skoda Barber?
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Here. We have ceremonial resolutions.
Recognizing the honorings of the Puerto Rican fundraising, recognizing the dedication of Mayor Joseph A. DiMarino Memorial Park in Woodbridge, proclaiming December 21, 2025 as Homeless Persons Memorial Day in Middlesex County, recognizing the 45th anniversary of the New Zee Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Solori Incorporated, proclaiming December 2025 as National Paire Dryer Convention Month in Middlesex County.
Is there a motion to adopt these ceremonial resolutions? Let's hear it.
Second.
Call.
County Commissioner Skoda Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum? County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes.
And correspondents?
Each commissioner has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the Clerk's Office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept unfiled in the Office of the Clerk and the Board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence? What's that?
Second.
All in favor? No. Motion catch. Minutes for approval.
Minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, November 17, 2025 at 6:30 p.m.
Is there a motion to adopt? Approved.
Second.
Call.
County Commissioner Skoda Barber?
Here, Madam Vori.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. Reports of commissioners. Commissioner Cradaville Skoda Barber?
Thank you, Director Rios. The 2025 State Serious Series in Art Contest winners along with their works of art are posted in the Office of Agents and Disabled Services website. Middlesex County Artists received 14 awards, two first places, two second places, three third places, and seven honorable mentions at the state contest. What talent we have in Middlesex County. Congratulations to all the winners. During this holiday season, show how much you care about helping others. Feed Middlesex County residents who are struggling and in need of food. Donations can be dropped and replenished at 28 Kennedy Boulevard in East Brunswick or call at 732-729-080808. To escape your pickup, thank you, Director Rios. That would be my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
I have nothing to add, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner enlisted Coppel?
Thank you, Director. Tonight, I'm happy to announce that the county has concluded its annual auction process and received total proceeds of approximately $445,000. The first auction concluded on October 15 and featured office furniture and equipment. 216 lots were sold for a total proceeds amount of $50,000. The second action concluded on November 18, 28, and featured vehicles, buses, and construction equipment. 104 lots were sold for a total proceeds amount of $430,000. This auction is not only a wonderful opportunity for anyone in the public to find gently-used items at an affordable price, but it also helps drive a recurring revenue source to help offset taxation. All funding received from the auction is placed in a dedicated revenue, resulting in a reduction of the total amount to be raised by taxation. Director, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Chanel Scott McCollum?
Thank you, Director. Good evening, everyone. From the Arts Institute in Middlesex County, this Saturday, December 6, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., celebrate the holiday season at East Jersey Old Town Village in St. Louis. Enjoy the 18th and 19th century holiday music, listen to Christmas stories, and tune for a reading of Charles Dickens' A Christmas Carol. This is a family-friendly event, and we're hoping that you will be able to attend. Director, that was my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Deputy Director Chantin Nara?
Thank you, Director. From the Department of Public Safety and Health, since the holidays are upon us, it means celebrations, parties, and festivities. It is also a time when people will be traveling, setting up their holiday decorations, cooking and baking, and during this time of year, it also unfortunately brings accidental fires, injuries, and mishaps. Many of these are avoidable, and so there are a few holiday tips we would like everyone to remember. If you're decorating a live tree, please make sure you water it regularly and keep it away from flames and other heat sources. Don't overload electrical outlets or connections. Please don't leave candles or open flames burning unattended. And also, very importantly, please leave extra time when traveling. We ask everybody to be vigilant when they're out on our roads and make these holidays memorable and safe for you and your loved ones. For other safety tips, please visit our county's website. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Tamara?
Thank you, Director. The Family Ice Wink in Roosevelt Park in Edison is now open for the season. Beautiful outdoor facility has a lot to offer, including open skating sessions, skate rentals, birthday parties, and private rink rentals. If you and your family are interested in learning to ice skate, I recommend checking out the Ice Skates Lessons. They are available for all skill levels that include weekly lessons, skate rentals, and practice times. Registrations are currently open, and for more information about the lessons and the ice wink, you can be found on our website. That concludes my report, Director.
Thank you. I would just like to wish everyone, even though we have another meeting before the holidays, some of the holidays, I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season. And as Deputy Director Nara mentioned, as far as fire safety with the house with candles and lights and the trees and on the highways, I just urge everyone to please drive with caution, think about everything that you're doing around you, and enjoy the holiday. Okay, Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
This time, I open up the meeting to the public on resolutions listed only.
Good evening, Commissioners. Charlie Cradaville here in New Brunswick. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. Start with 1381. This is another $4 million, not to exceed $4 million, for marketing Dr. Inc. Can you tell me what services they provide for the $4 million?
Yes, Charlie. They provide all of the media, from TV to primarily TV media for the communications and outreach, which we give to the community and all the programs that are provided by the county.
So when you say they do media, you mean they take this $4 million and they spend most of it on advertising, right? They purchase advertising time on television, et cetera?
That is correct.
Okay, and they keep some for themselves, presumably some percentage?
Correct.
I'm going to move on to the next one, AVA Toprite LLC. And then apparently another one for AVA Toprite, $5.4 million and $2.2 million. What is AVA Toprite doing for that? Seven and a half million dollars.
They build all the creative relative to the messaging we provide that is sold by the media company and buys lots not only on TV, but all social media channels, all literature that is produced. For example, some of that is what we do during election time and educating the public of going to vote when it comes to some of our behavioral health programs. You'll see that throughout the county when you look at the work that they're doing with the college. The separation between is between the county enterprise, the rest is the college, through the United School primarily. And that's when you look at the work that they've been doing and the enrollment increases taking place at the college and should be relevant to the marketing and outreach we've done throughout the community and enrolled at the college place in our community. So, you know, though it's defined as marketing, it really is that we are by which the county can do the programs and services that are centrally provided to our residents and our businesses in addition to our economic strategy and how we're retaining and attracting new businesses, which ultimately lead to new jobs such as what's happening at the Helix and many of the companies that are now being in to Middlesex County, there's always the AI technology, life science programs, and the like.
And it's also for advertising for the MCIA and the MCUA.
And another one is replenished when you look at the need for food insecurity, Dave did a tremendous amount of work to really to ensure that communities are healthy.
Yeah, so, you know, $7.5 million would buy a lot of food to feed people, but instead it's being spent on this one particular company, AVA Toprite. Because my time's ticking, I gotta get to my questions here. So AVA Toprite, I believe Dave Sutton founded one of the two companies that make up that firm. Do you know Whitney Sutton, Mr. Director?
I know who?
Whitney Sutton?
Okay.
Well, Whitney Sutton, you know, worked for this outfit and chose to give $2,500 of her hard-earned money or deserved money to the campaign of Clarice Skoda Barber. Another $2,500 went to each of the running mates that year. This person lives in Atlanta. Interesting that they would want to invest so much in political candidates in Middlesex County. Then there's also a guy named Bill Fasic. He works for this outfit and in 2021 gave $2,500 each to you, Mr. Rios. Deputy Director Nara, Commissioner Scott McCollum, each got $2,500 for their campaign. 2022, Bill now has an address in St. Simone Island, Georgia. He gives $2,600 each to Commissioner Scott McCollum, Commissioner Kenny, and the sheriff, another only $2,350 to Ms. Skoda Barber. 2024, Bill's giving $3,000 each to you, Mr. Rios, and Deputy Director Nara?
He didn't make a clarification. He didn't give any, they didn't give any of that money to us. You're saying us. It is given to the campaign that is run by people that we have running our campaigns.
Right. Well, what are we to make of this, that you're now turning around and giving $7.5 million to the company that your donors run? How is this not highly suspect?
Because the process is a competitive bid that many companies come in on it and are pre-qualified based on the competitive bidding that goes on. So it's not just given to them arbitrarily. It's a formal process that they have to follow.
Great. How many years have they won?
Time is up.
Over the last seven years.
What a coincidence.
Thank you.
Skills qualified, and that's a company we govern.
Anyone else in the public? More votes for the board?
Second.
All in favor? No. No. Any commissioner have to vote on anything separately?
I do, Director.
Okay. Which one?
1420, I believe it is.
Yes, 1420. Anyone else? Mr. Kelso?
Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent amendment assisting resolution numbers 25-1376 to resolution 25-1442 excluding resolution 1420 to be voted upon. Is there a motion to approve? Consent agenda? What's your?
Second.
Call.
County Commissioner Skoda Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Kenny and that resolution 25-1420. Is there a motion to approve?
Still good.
Second.
Call.
County Commissioner Skoda Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
I'm not voting.
County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. This time, I open up the meeting to the public. Seeing none?
No.
Before we, excuse me, sir, before you speak, I want to make a statement. Thank you for being here tonight, and I understand that some of you are here to discuss the Immigrant Trust Act. I want to be clear that my colleagues and I share the values reflected in this legislation as well as in the current Attorney General's Immigrant Trust Directive. Here in Middlesex County, we do take action to protect our immigrant population and already uphold the principles outlined in the Immigrant Trust Act. For example, we collect minimal personal data in our electronic databases to ensure that identifying information cannot be used against any of our residents. Any information we do collect does not share with federal agencies unless required by law. Our law enforcement agencies adhere to the Attorney General's Immigrant Trust Directive and cooperate with federal immigration agencies only in specific defined circumstances in accordance with that directive. We carefully scrutinize any potential funding source, especially federal grants, to ensure that by accepting funding, we do not put our immigrant community or any resident of Middlesex County in jeopardy. We recognize the importance of community voice and have residents of all backgrounds, regardless of citizenship or immigration status, serving on our advisory council and orders. We work closely with the State Office of New Americans and with our partner agencies to provide education and support for all Middlesex County residents. Our staff participate in immigration committee meetings organized by community partners to ensure our residents know Middlesex County is a safe and supportive provider. Through our Commissioner Support Grants, we fund our agencies and partners in our community doing this critical work and are committed to continuing to fortify them during these difficult times. With that said, we do not use our public meetings, which are meant to conduct the business of county government, as a form to lobby our colleagues at other levels of government. Middlesex County does have a long history of collaboration with our legislative delegation, and we maintain strong working relationships with our state and federal representatives. We commend and respect those who advocate for these important issues. Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Troy Shart here at Big Now Piano. I come from 48 Stanton Street in South River. It's a small little borough, but it's in Middlesex nonetheless. I do want to genuinely give my appreciation for the statement that you just gave. I think it's obviously good to see an acknowledgement of this issue, and I do genuinely believe that you all agree with the values that are being advocated for in this act. But the thing that I disagree with is that I simply don't understand how passing a resolution is seen as a step too far in this process, right? This bill is applying for the entire state, so it's very much applicable to the governance of this county. And I appreciate hearing, it's good to be reaffirmed, that local law enforcement is following the Immigrant Trust Directive. But the reason why this Immigrant Trust Act is so critical is because that's a directive given by the Attorney General, and we do not know if that directive is going to be continued within this new administration. And I just simply want to ask, and it's not the direct question, it's more rhetorical, but I just simply want to ask again, like I did last time, if neutrality is more important than leveraging as much political capabilities that you guys have as commissioners to take a stand and advocate for the most vulnerable people in this community? I have no doubt that everyone on this commission does care for the sake and the safety of immigrant lives and families who are within this county, which is why, to me, it seems like not so tall of a step, so huge of a burden to take on for the commissioners to pass a resolution in favor of this law, because there is quite a bit of pressure you guys can exert on the state government that we feel is critical for getting this passed. This isn't a particularly controversial or unpopular bill, and it's my belief that most of the Assembly and Senators would vote in favor of this bill. But from what we gather, there is a lot of hesitancy at the top leadership, which includes Assembly Speaker Coughlin, whose district is in Middlesex County. So to have the commissioners pass a resolution from Coughlin's home county would be a fairly powerful stance and one that I believe me and I believe some of the other speakers today would feel would be very critical and very much necessary to this process. Once again, I don't want you guys to assume that I'm taking you in bad faith. I absolutely believe that the commissioners believe in the safety of immigrants and putting these important regulations in place, right? But I do think that this law is rather critical and that it does need to have a stance be made, and I think that is a lot more important than neutrality or procedure. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Catherine Hunt, 121, Lander Peak, Lowland Lane, Marmar Township, 08831. And I as well am advocating that you please put on your agenda and also vote in favor of a resolution for the Immigrant Trust Act. We need your pressure on our leadership. Every time I talk with legislators, whether it's in Trenton or I go to their offices near my home, the answer to why, after a whole year and in the lame duck, we do not see this bill move at all? It has not been allowed to go through any part of its normal procedures. It has not been allowed to advance through the committees that it has to go through and therefore cannot come out to a floor vote, even though many of the legislators say that they would vote for the bill if it were to come out. And they say the reason why, when I ask them, it's leadership. The leadership is preventing the bill from going through its normal process of evaluation. I'm asking that you do show your support for this bill by passing a resolution so that leadership can see. And leadership, by the way, they dename as Scutari and Coughlin as preventing this bill from advancing. So it's very important that in your care for immigrants, that you will do all you can and use all the power that you have to advocate for them, to advocate for our community. And I'm asking again that you do add the Immigrant Trust Act to your agenda as a resolution and pass the resolution in favor, as five other counties has done. Mercer, for example, evaluated very carefully what it would mean to Mercer County, and they actually adjourned their meeting and re-adjourned with the Immigrant Trust Act resolution on the agenda and passed it in my mind. It's possible to do, and I hope that you will take to heart both the responsibility and the care that you have for your community and the understanding that you really do have influence. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yes, good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I also want to thank you for the statement you made and thank the advocates again for coming out and speaking up on this. I have another matter I wanted to ask about first, though. Do you or your colleagues have any comment on the arrest of Sheriff's Officer Michael Grabb?
There's no comment to be made.
Okay. Yeah, you know, continue to be disturbed with some of the allegations against law enforcement, not only in the county, but, you know, all over our state. We've had some real tragedies this year because of law enforcement that were not cut out for the job and ended up taking lives. So I know you asked the Attorney General to do a transparent investigation into the August 8 killing of Deborah Terrell by New Brunswick Police Officer Hostway Plaza, and I'm here to tell you again that the AG is dropping the ball. They still have not even named Hostway Plaza as the shooter. They're trying to keep it a secret who killed Deborah Terrell. It's been almost four months. What can you do? What will you do about this tragedy?
Charlie, you know that if there's an investigation going on, we cannot make any comments to jeopardize the investigation, so we're not going to make any kind of comments on investigation at all.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you say in August that you were going to reach out to the AG's office? Did that happen?
I said anybody could reach out to the AG's office.
Oh, so you didn't do anything?
I'm not going to reach out to the AG's office and give my opinion on how a law enforcement investigation should go.
So you're not, you didn't call for a transparent investigation? You're not calling for that? You're not using your voice?
I'm not going to answer that question, Charlie.
Why not?
Because I'm not going to answer that question. I'm not here to get cross-examined by you on a police investigation, a law enforcement investigation on a crime. You should know that, David.
You're right, it was a crime. It was a crime for Hostway Plaza to kill Deborah Terrell, and you should be speaking out on it. You should be using your voice. You should be using your power, and it's so frustrating to live in this county for decades and not have my representatives even willing to make a call on this. So you're telling me you didn't do an investigation?
An investigation? By the way, I'm not going to make a comment on that. I don't think it's appropriate for either side, whether it's one side or the other.
What are the sides? I don't get it.
For the defendant or the victim? I'm not going to make a comment because it might jeopardize the investigation. Yes. Charlie, just to set the record straight, and I think you're aware of this, in August, my office actually sent formal requests for information with regard to the investigation and to have the investigation move forward expeditiously. So we did, as a county, formally request them to expedite that.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to follow up on that, and please ask them to step it up because it's been almost four months, and they won't even admit that it was Hostway Plaza who killed Deborah Terrell. And if they would, people would be able to put together the connection that Hostway Plaza had previously been the subject of major discipline for a drunken misconduct incident a few years ago. But by keeping the name a secret, they're keeping that fact a secret, and it's disgusting because our police officers are public servants. They must be, we don't have secret police in this country, right? I don't want a country to secret police. I think all of us here agree on that. So then why don't we say his name? Why doesn't the Attorney General's office say who did it? I mean, this is disgusting. I'm absolutely, truly, genuinely disgusted by the secrecy. Moving on. I had the pleasure of delivering a letter with many others to Senator President Scutari's office in support of the Immigrant Trust Act and a number of other bills, and I will say this, those offices do take note when boards, councils, commissioners pass resolutions. It does weigh in, it does make a difference, and so I am urging you to please use your power to pass a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act and send it to leadership. You know, there's limited time for you to take this action, and while I appreciate your statement, I join the advocates in asking you to please use your power, pass a resolution in support of it. If you support the values in it, use your office to support it and do what you can to make a difference to get it across the finish line, because the people of Middlesex County deserve people in those seats who are going to fight for us, not come up with reasons not to do things we need better. Please, do it.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Pisaki. I am from Cranbury, New Jersey, 08512. Thank you once again for giving us the opportunity to speak about the Immigrant Trust Act. Along with Charlie and several others in this room, I too went to visit my legislators and to talk to Senator Greenstein about the Immigrant Trust Act. Senator Greenstein's response was that she needed as much ammunition as possible to get it out of committee and post it onto the floor. I had mentioned the fact that we have been meeting with township committees like this one and 24 others in four other counties to raise our voices and to ask our local leadership to please make sure our voices are heard and that we are supporting the Immigrant Trust Act. She said this is the kind of information she needs to go further, to push further. Yes, she is a co-sponsor on that bill, but yes, it also needs the voices of the people to rise up so that she can get it onto the floor. In addition, I wanted to point out something about Middlesex in particular. As of 2023, Middlesex County, New Jersey residents- As of 2023, Middlesex County, New Jersey residents, 297,000 people were born outside of the United States in this county alone. That is comparable to the percentage of foreign-born individuals in the rest of the country. Middlesex County has a huge population here that is vulnerable. We have folks who have green cards, we have folks who are naturalized citizens, we have American citizens as well, born here, raised here, who are also picked up because they are black or brown or somehow don't fit a particular profile or have particular papers with them at the time they're being picked up. I am a social worker, I've worked in schools, I've worked in courts, I've had children as young as nine years old asking me why the president leaves their family, and they're terrified that when they leave their father or mother in the morning to go off to class, that one of those parents isn't going to be there when they get home. Please, we are all vulnerable. The last piece that I'd like to remind you is, we have folks, because the Immigrant Trust Directive does not protect privacy rights in certain elements, we have folks who are afraid to go to police when they are experiencing domestic violence, we have folks who are afraid to go to emergency rooms when they've had some kind of criminal act performed against them. When people are afraid to go to the police, then we are all in danger. So this is not just an issue for immigrants, this is a safety issue for all of us. So please, consider using your voice to elevate our voices so that we can give some fodder for Senator Greenstein and all of our legislators to get this out of committee and post it for a vote. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Mariah Turpin, and my address is 52 Harvard Road. I just want to ask you guys if you think this looks acceptable? If I could just have your attention, please? Mr. Kalos Thomas, thank you. If I can have your attention, does this look okay to you? This is the alleged ICE I was talking about the last time I saw you guys. These are the people I said were alleged to be ICE with no proof, all tinted-out windows, no front plates, as you can see. If you need a closer look, you can grab me after this meeting. I think it is abundantly clear that we need this resolution passed. The youth is speaking. I'm sorry that, you know, we don't come out to these often, but my DMs are honestly getting flooded with how much people agree with me. So I think that you guys need to do some evaluation of who you guys are, what you guys think is right and wrong, and really connect with your constituents, because you're not. Speaking on behalf of the 100 to 150 people who are at the Old Bridge Planning Board meeting tonight, I just want to encourage you guys to not fund Old Bridge's updated sewer system. It's enabling the destruction of our community. Over 1,000 houses, townhouses and homes have already been, luxury homes have already been built by Old Waterworks Road. Not only that, there's, the planning board is planning on changing the zoning policy so that they can place a warehouse over there. People there, people in Old Bridge are not having it. This area has also been contaminated by CPS Madison, a dump site, since 1967, about, around as, along with all of you guys. So 32 wells were capped as a result of this, and severe flooding is also increased as a result of this. The citizens of Old Bridge are not here today, but they are definitely speaking out at the zoning board, and I encourage you guys to stand behind them by not funding the updated sewer plan. Once again, I want to take my time to ask you guys, does this look like a federal agent or someone pretending to be one? And does this look like something you would call 911 for if they were knocking on doors and being suspicious? Does this look like law enforcement? Does this look like law enforcement to any of you guys? Does it? Hello?
Will this into your comments?
It's a question.
Will this into your comments?
Does it look like law enforcement to you? Because that's what they were alleging to be. So, I mean, we can have ICE identify themselves, we can have them do whatever their just duties are, but the way that they're going about it right now is an abuse of power, and we'd appreciate it if you acknowledged that, because your silence is deafening. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion to close?
Motion.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Dawn Collins, from Bell Lake, New Jersey, 08502. I'm here again in support...
Could you just move up the mic a little bit, please, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm also here in support of a request to pass a resolution in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act. Middlesex County has already suffered some raids. There is, you know, a duty to protect your residents, there is a duty to ensure that your resources are not being used to attack your residents. There is, you know, I heard a story recently, it happened in Texas, but it could as easily happen in New Jersey, where an autistic child was found wandering around, a non-verbal child was found wandering around, was picked up by the police, turned over to ICE and detained for 50 days with no contact with his parents. His mother had filed a police report, okay, saying that this child was missing. It was not an oversight. Okay? I do not want to hear about a story like that happening in New Jersey. We need to ensure that New Jersey law enforcement sticks to dealing with public safety. As of now, five counties representing over 30% of New Jersey population have already passed resolutions. I urge you to follow their suit and urge the legislature to pass the Immigrant Trust Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Before we make a motion to adjourn the meeting, I have one more stop statement to make. I want to thank you again for being here and for sharing your thoughts about the Immigrant Trust Act with us. We're empathetic to our immigrant community and the fear and uncertainty they are experiencing during these unprecedented times. We want to be clear, Middlesex County believes that all people deserve to be treated with dignity, compassion and respect. We continue to follow the Attorney General's Immigrant Trust Directive, and should that directive or any other state or federal policy change which directly impacts the county government, we will consider adjustments to county policy to ensure we continue to protect the rights and safety of all of our residents. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Abol.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Meeting adjourned.